6:33 PM, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So this is a work session meeting, so a little bit less structure. But we do have public comment, so we've got 15 minutes. There is someone with us tonight, you have anything that you want to offer tonight, Ray? Alright, we'll move on then to number three, media business. So the first order business, 3A, is the Hill School RFP. So there's a couple sporting documents in the drive, but Patty, if you want to kick us off. Go to sleep, I think.
Here we go. We discussed the need to do RFP, I think the board decided to do an RFP and not an RFQ, correct? Okay, so we'll need to put that together. I gave you both documents from Deerfield, just to use as a draft. And then I did ask Amber the pieces of information that she would need from you to make it Pembroke-specific. And I included her email in your drive. So the specification, she's going to know what the project consists of, the scope of the work, any requirements that you have, the timeline, and the contacts for the project. So those are things that we need to decide in order to publish the RFP.
Alright, so thoughts on the items from the email? I think that Kevin can be helpful in some of this, and I neglected to invite him tonight. But I think that we have at least a recommendation for what the project consists of. There were, I believe that that plan specified a number of classrooms. State, a gymnasium with a stage, right, and some other specifics.
I think the other decision you need to make as well, Deerfield decided, so you've had some drawings done up by our architect previously. Unfortunately, in my opinion, it's unfortunate, I think what he did was take, you know, just, there's 10 classrooms at Village School, so let's add 10 classrooms on. That was more the structure of, okay, we're closing Village, so we need to replicate whatever's at Village at Hill. The RFP from Deerfield included coming up with a design. So they went in and looked at all the systems. So when we chose this firm, the architect, they did like a big brainstorming session with staff members, invited community members, you know, what would you like to see in your school, what are the important spaces that you don't have that you want? Are there spaces that you want to keep? They came up with three different drafts of three different designs for us to choose from. And in that, that process included all of their engineers. So they looked at the entire HVAC system, they looked at all the systems, so that they could come not only with a recommendation for an addition, but, you know, hey, your building is X number of years old, this whole section has to be rehabbed in terms of X, Y, and Z. So it was much more comprehensive, if that's the direction you're looking to go. You have enough in that warrant article to cover.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where my head was at, but they, so we had the NBC retrospective on Thursday. And obviously, there's concern with bringing a bond in the same year as a teacher contract and all that. But that aside, Mark and Jerry were somewhat, I don't know, not confident that we had enough time to pull all this together for March. Do you know what the timeframe was just for that RFP process for Deerfield?
I think our first meeting was July, if I remember correctly. I mean, you're, it was, it was rushed, but because Deerfield, their recommendation was basically almost like a new school. So they realized that building was 30 years old, and it wasn't built well, in their opinion. So they were basically suggesting that we everything out and just keep the structure in place, and we do everything. So that was much more lengthy than maybe just, hey, what's the minimum?
Okay.
We need, so it might be rushed, you might get partway through and decide that it's ready in time for a warrant.
Right, I mean, if that's what happens.
Right, you could start the process and just.
So I guess what's everybody else, I mean, that's kind of the route that I was thinking, I'd want to see new drawings and all that stuff. I think we may be able to condense it somewhat with, like you said, the focus group. I would still want some people from the school in the room, but I think the committee has done a lot of that work already. So I would start, you know, I'd probably have that group be smaller. Talk to Kevin about who they already interviewed, have those people in the room. But I also think, at the time that they were doing those interviews, I think that Ms. Griffiths was still here. So I don't know that Wendy had any input at all. So I like the idea of the process, but hopefully, we can shorten it a little bit and condense it a little bit, since we've already done some of that legwork. But I would like to hear what everybody.
And I'll just add that that, that actual, that process was done while the rest was happening. So they came during the day and met with staff. So it didn't hold anything up, it was after they hired the architect firm, while they had their engineers going through looking at all the systems. They also came in during the day and just did a brainstorming with staff. So it doesn't have to, that piece shouldn't hold everything up.
Sure. Great.
Yeah, you're right, that was all speculation, the buildings hadn't marched yet, now you know.
So others thoughts on the process, I guess?
Quickly read through the RFP from Deerfield. It pretty much encompasses what we were talking about, you know, not just new construction, but the renovation also. So I think this is a good place to build off of, but obviously, we need the input. Like Sandy mentioned, yes, it was prior, so. But I mean, this format, this outline, I think is, I think is okay. I was just trying to go through and find something that I had a question on.
I'm curious.
Go ahead. That's what it was. The existing footprint, now, is Deerfield going to take it down and start it up again? Okay, so this is, this does not include that, alright.
I'm curious the level of detail that Amber needs for these questions, because obviously, I mean, scope of work and service that are provided is kind of what we're trying to figure out, right? So, I mean, does she need? We want seven classrooms, a gym with a stage and a courtyard, or like, what, what level of detail is?
The RFP that we put out for Deerfield, it wasn't, you know, you could simply say, this is the same, we want the same. We want to develop the conceptual designs for renovation and an addition or standalone building. I don't think we want a standalone building, but that way, they'll look at the systems and, yeah, I would cross that off. They weren't sure if it was going to be more cost-effective to just have like a building that wasn't necessarily attached, but I don't think that's the case at Hill.
I just think we need, sorry that we need additional information and should do it that way, because we're going to go to the town with a warrant article, like, we want to make sure it's sustainable, because we want to make sure we've covered everything, all those systems, because you probably only have one shot at it, and you want to make sure you, like, it's going to be kept up, do you know what I mean? You don't want to do this, and then four years down the road, we need to do it, add an addition.
Right, and I think that's an important point, because that's really why, in my opinion, that's why we're in this position, because deferred maintenance got deferred too long at Village School, and it got to be, you know, unreasonable to try to rehab that building. So I think starting out with something that is not just adequate, but is good. Yeah, it puts us in a better position to maintain those systems, and have this be something that we can keep for decades and decades. I don't, I'm sure that I'll, I'll be long gone, but I don't want a future board to have to make another decision about closing a decrepit building. It's not a fun discussion, so.
I don't think it should be just, oh, there's seven classrooms, we need seven classrooms, there should be new architect designs, and have everything looked at, so that it's going to cover what we need long-term.
Right, so is, do you think that if we, if we're in agreement that the document from Deerfield is basically on track, could Amber use that information to just tweak that one to fit what we're doing here? Or are there some of these that she needs actual answers from us?
I will get back to you on that, I didn't specifically ask, ask her that question. I think the pieces, unless you have a strong opinion about when you want the walkthroughs to be conducted and all of that, we can just pick dates with Josh.
Yeah, that's, you guys know.
You know, and give people, you know, like, give people two to three weeks to submit proposals. So as long as there's no significant issue with that, we can just do the timelines ourselves for you guys. We'll just get it done as quickly as possible.
I mean, to me, it makes sense, I don't know what you guys think, you guys are, you're the ones that are in the buildings, know what's going on, so I don't have an opinion on the timelines at all. Anybody else?
So I am, is this still, yeah. If, when I was looking at the RFP from Deerfield, you had said July, but it was dated April of '21?
I think the first meeting with the person they chose was July, so I was thinking about like when it actually got moving.
So essentially, right now, they're just in the design process?
No, they're finished, they, they put a bond forward and it failed.
Oh, okay.
Because it was $45 million. It was, they came back with the, basically like, tear down everything but the exterior of the building, because everything needed, the HVAC system, the fire alarm system, you know, the roof, everything.
That's how bad that was.
It was, yeah, and it failed, so now we have to kind of plan B.
So that brings up an interesting conversation, too. I know that last time drawings were made, this is kind of before my time, so I'm piecing this together, but that was, the architecture firm kind of referred to that as the Cadillac Plan. And Melanie and I just said, you know, more is better and starting on good footing. Is it, can we get sort of multiple plans from one of these places? And, and then I guess, kind of on top of that, is there a way, and I probably wouldn't do this, I haven't thought this through, is there a way to put multiple warrant articles on with the one we want first? And then, you know, warrant article number four is if number three fails, then, you know, a lesser dollar amount. I'm not saying I'd want to do that, I'm just curious if that's, I don't see why we couldn't.
We, the only sort of, if this fails, that, we had a few if-then's. So we had the $45 million bond, and then we had, if this passes, do you want to spend another $9 million to attach a community rec center to the building? And then it was, if this fails, then do you approve $400,000 to be put into a capital reserve to start working on some of the things that need to be, you know, so you can structure some.
And that's kind of where I was going, again, I would, I don't know that that's a good idea, because then it kind of gives people the options of, oh, look, there's a cheaper one. But I'm also thinking of from, from the standpoint of saving money, right? Like, the town gave us a quarter million dollars from surplus to look into this. If we get to March, we put a bond forward and it fails, I don't want to be to the point where we have to ask for more money to do it again. If we've already done all this work, and we can have a couple plans, even if we don't put them all on the warrant, but if we, if we don't have to redo a bunch of work if it fails, that would be, you know, it'd save taxpayers money, so.
The best thing you can do is try to engage the community in the process, and get the community into the building to view the options and give opinions, so that you know, okay, you know, hopefully, it's enough people that you'd get a sense of what the community could support, and wouldn't support.
Okay, I mean, on the face of it, I'm, the structure of the RFP from Deerfield is acceptable to me. You know, obviously, it's a different project, but other than that, I, having Josh kind of be in charge of the timelines makes sense. Are there any other changes to what we've been presented from Deerfield? And in this email that people think we need to make from what Deerfield did? I think we're kind of in an advantageous position here, in that we're able to piggyback on them some. This is definitely saving us some work, hopefully some time.
See a middle ground, but, you know, not what's the minimum and not, you know. It'd be great if we could just start over, but what would a middle ground look like?
Yeah, they, they had three options, so I don't see that that's unreasonable.
Okay, so is that enough for you to?
I think so, yeah. When it's ready, I'll just send it to you, if that's okay, Andy, and if you.
Yeah, that's, that's okay with me. I, I think, I hate to say it out loud, my wife will kill me, but this, I mean, I think this is going to necessitate some summer meetings, too. So we'll have to talk about that when it gets a little bit later.
And the, the committee took a lot, the committee did a lot of work. The, the entire board wasn't there, but I, you know, there were, ironically, there were two board members that were there pretty consistently, because they wanted to be. And then at the end, there were three board members at all the meetings, not voting members of the committee, but they just wanted to be part of the process and hear everything from the experts, and sort of waiting for a presentation for the board, so you can decide that at some point. But if you have a good, active committee with a lot of expertise on your committee, then they can get a lot of it done.
Yeah, and so far, we've had very good luck. I mean, Kevin has a lot of knowledge as far as municipal stuff in general goes. He also worked in real estate, so he has some knowledge there. But also, I mean, the members of that committee had a wide range of, of skills and expertise. So any of you who are watching this now or later, thank you very much, we appreciate it, and hope that you don't mind hanging in there a little longer.
And when you get a little bit further, too, it's important that Josh is going to be, going to need to be there. And then the principal started coming to all the meetings, and I was going to the meetings, because Amber was already working on Allenstown, so I took on the Deerfield project in her place. So we'll definitely have to add people.
Alright, anything else on that before we move on? Good, I'm glad that the ball is rolling. So 3B is board goals for next year. So we don't need to finalize tonight, but I wanted to get it on here and start talking about it. Meant to ask to have last year's goals in there, but I, were they in there? Do you think of that without me saying anything?
No, because I, you never approved this year's, you just had a draft. So I think I was hoping tonight, and maybe not, because Amy's not here, I was just hoping to get some dates, you know, like, maybe even before, the summer seems to get really hectic. So if, even if you wanted to start in, in May, or get a couple of meetings on the books that we could try and devote just to that work, and actually write them during the meeting, because I think that's when it falls apart, when somebody says, I'll draft them, and then it carries on.
Yep, I was thinking the May, the second May meeting, but it's up to everybody. I mean, my thought going for, we've got two more work sessions, right? We've got May and June, do we have a second June meeting? So, you know, we're running out of time, I think that the Hill School is going to be on every agenda.
June 21st.
Okay, so, I mean, I would say, if it's okay with you guys, we start next time, not next meeting, but next work session, which would be May, whatever the date is, 17th or something like that.
I won't be here on June 21st.
Okay.
Beta leadership.
Yeah, so May 17th. So, you know, any brainstorm you can do between now and then? Can we get the draft of this past year's in there? I mean, I remember going through those before the election, and many of them were met, so hopefully, I. Yeah, so I don't, you know, hopefully, we don't need to do too much, but some things we can always keep on there.
And you're gonna, if you're looking at a big project and a bond, you're probably, that's going to be a pretty big focus of the board.
So, okay, and then if we, you know, if we don't finish on 5/17, we can, we can finalize on the 21st. That's, you know, and Stacy has time to input in May, and hopefully, you know, what I'm picturing is, we'll have stupid language questions to finish up, and we'll, you know, we can finalize those on the 21st. If that's okay with everybody?
Right.
Only if you, yeah, if you were, well, Amy can. Actually, you can, too.
I can.
You were at.
Yeah.
I don't think you're on.
So if we could, could you have like Kathy take this out from last year and put it in the drive, so they can see it, and?
It may, you know, this year may look different, because I think part of what we realized in Deerfield was the number of sessions and meetings that needed to be scheduled to engage the community, because no matter how hard we tried, people felt like they had, this is the first time we've heard about this, even though we had been talking about it like you have for years. You have, you, you need to find ways to engage the community, so that they're not hearing about it for the first time when you're getting ready to ask them to vote on a warrant article.
Right.
So there were a lot of, you know, those are the things your, your goals may focus on, you know, that you can leave the day-to-day operations to the administration, understanding what your expectations are, and then your goals are really focused on your work for the next year.
Yeah, I think pretty much this will be our work, goodness pushed forward. So any list we come up with as far as goals should be almost, hate to say minimal, but minimal.
Right, the one thing I can think of that I would like to follow up on is the social media thing, specifically because that's going to help us with the communication around getting awareness on the building.
I just realized Barrett's coming May 17th.
Well, that's right.
And we were going to ask his opinion about that, had, because we looked at the policies, but we wanted to see what the best way was to set up the page, and any advice falls to avoid. Yeah, he's going to be here on 17th.
How long does his spiel take?
He'll do whatever we want, he, I, we're going to brainstorm tonight what topics we want him to cover.
Okay.
You know, when he, I think he was here last time, it was a good, like, maybe two hours.
Yeah, well, I thought we had talked about doing goals the night he was here, in case we had some pointers. So I think we can still do both, if he doesn't mind sticking around his presentation first, and then goals after, and then he might be able to, you know, let us know if we're getting out of our lane or anything. Okay, yeah, I had forgotten that, too, thank you for.
Can we still throw that into an Excel spreadsheet? Like, I'll create a template, but what, just for the goals? It's a lot easier to follow, like, each meeting, if we can throw them in an Excel spreadsheet, because then you can just add a note each time we go to touch our goals.
Oh, yeah.
And then it's a lot easier, it's one document to follow along each meeting.
Yeah.
You know how like, at the end, we're like, met, met, we've met this, we've met that.
Right, yeah, we can do that.
This is like halfway, if we could throw it in there, I think it'd be a lot easier to see our progress.
We should do it in a Google Sheet.
Yes, yeah.
Because then we can put it right in the top-level folder for this year, and update as we go.
I just think that'd be a really good idea to keep historical data.
For sure. What else? Okay, I'll make, I'll try to remember to send Amy an email, and let her know to be prepared for that. Okay. Anything else on board goals before we move on? Then 3C is what we were just talking about, New Hampshire School Board Association presentation topics.
If, I'll tell you, Melanie, because you do have access to it, on the May 4th, 20, was it May 4th? Yeah, May 4th, 2021, the Hill School renovation recommendation is in that draft.
Oh, you have, okay, alright. Oh, can we ask, I don't know if we said this last time, can we ask Kathy to make a folder in this year's, not per meeting? Okay, okay, great. Yeah, so we'll have one centralized location for all that stuff. Okay, so we did invite Barrett Christina from the New Hampshire School Board Association to join us on May 17th, which is our next work session meeting. He has come a few times for us and done kind of an abridged version of the new school board member training that he does, or that him and Will do together at the School Board Association office. That's a good training, and I would recommend anybody that hasn't taken it do so, but having him here gives us the chance to ask very pointed questions, too. And he's, he's good about answering them, and if he can't, he takes them back and gets us answers very quickly. And Barrett and Will, Will is, I can, I can never remember Will's last name, but Phil, thank you, he, he's the attorney for the School Board Association, they are both fantastic resources. If there's anything, you know, that I can't answer for you, or you have questions about how processes work or whatever, they are more than willing to help, they're super responsive, they're usually ready at a moment's notice. There was one time when I was working on a regional drive, and I asked Will a question, and he was like, what are you doing for lunch today? And I went over there like 20 minutes later, for real, and had lunch with him and asked him a bunch of questions, so. But anyway, so if people have things, I'll write them down now, but I guess, similar to the board goals, in the next few days, if you haven't thought about this, please do, and if there are specific topics that you'd like him to be more prepared to present on, get those to Patty, I guess? Okay, I would say off the bat, if he's got anything already drawn up in his repertoire regarding building bonds, might, might as well hear him out. And then, last time, he also spoke to us a little bit about orderly meetings or efficient meetings, I think it was. And I think we've, I think we've incorporated most of those changes, but if there's anything that you guys think could be done different on our agendas, we could certainly talk to him about that. Anything else anybody has off, off the top of your head? If not, shoot me and Patty both an email. I would say within a week, so that we give him a week to prepare. Well, I guess, no, it's 17th, so it's four weeks, so in the next couple of weeks, to give him some time. But I think that'll, those four will fill up a good amount of time, so. And then, like, like we said before, we'll ask him to stick around while we start to tackle our goals, and see if he has any recommendations. You know, one of the things that he's pretty good about is pointing out when you're going outside the scope of what the school board should be, when you're starting to veer off into micromanaging, which I always appreciate, because it's, it's pretty easy to cross that line sometimes, so he's very cognizant of that. Anything else on 3C? This is weird, I feel like we're moving really fast. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely did.
Wouldn't have known where to even begin.
That, yeah, that's, yeah.
You know?
It's tough. Okay, Patty, if you don't mind introducing the friend of the court brief, I've read through it, and I got an email about it, but I don't, I certainly don't understand the entire thing.
So at the full SAU board meeting, Karen Gershka introduced talking points to file a friend of the court brief. Some, a couple of our school districts had cases against the Department of Health and Human Services, because there's a point at which students, when they turn 18, they're adults, but they are entitled to services from special education until they're 21. There's, it's like a, that three-year window where some pretty lax support services are in place from the state agencies. And the pressure has been put back on the school, because we're responsible for providing the special ed services for the schools to pay, pay for the residential placements of these students. Students have and can become homeless if they don't have a placement, because the services stop, and they're, they're adults. They're students that we would never have placed residentially, they didn't need a residential placement, but because they have no place to go, and we need to deliver the services, the agency was coming back to the local school districts. Clearly, it, the services get paid for one way or another, but it's not fair to put this on the local taxpayer in any given community when the state agencies have had that responsibility traditionally along the way. So the Drummond Woodsum has. So the Drummond Woodsum has done work for us in the past, they're the law for, law firm that covered the case and is writing a brief. They've asked each district for two things. You can do one or both, and that is to be listed as a friend of the court in the brief. And then also they're asking for a contribution of five hundred to one thousand dollars from each school district. Any excess funds to be returned. So they're, they're doing the work, they're representing all of us and they, that's their ask from all the school districts in the state.
Okay, I will add here before we get started on it. Amy did let me know fairly late today that she wasn't going to be able to attend tonight. She offered some input on a bunch of different topics, but I think we were able to cover most of those satisfactorily, but she did want to weigh in on this. And she said, I am strongly in favor of both us signing on to be named as friend of the court and to contribute money. The amount of money is less important than making a contribution, I'm in favor of an emo up to one thousand dollars. So, I mean, I would echo what Amy wrote. If I'm understanding this the way that I think I am, the burden of having to provide or financially support residential services for folks in this situation, being put on the school district is just another straight up downshift of costs to the local taxpayers. It's just, it's another thing that could potentially add a hundred thousand dollars or more each year. And just on the face of that, I'm not in favor of DHHS passing their costs onto the school district.
It just like, I think what Karen said too, that some of the there, there could be outside placements too, right? You know, which could run anywhere from a hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars for one student. Which, you know, again, doesn't affect the state, it affects everybody in the town.
Right, and it's another unpredictable piece.
Right, you don't know. Can't plan for that. So I, I would be in favor of signing on to this, I think it, it's almost, at this point in time, I mean, you've heard me in some of these other meetings when we're talking about testing and state requirements. I'm really, I'm at the end of my rope with, you know, these mandates that are either unfunded or not not realistic for a, you know, small town to handle. So, you know, I, I'm at the point where we gotta, I think, have to start drawing that line in the sand and everybody, every district, it can't just be one, it has to be everybody. Comes together and starts saying, no more, we're not doing this. And, you know, this is a start, I guess. So.
May I be in favor of doing the thousand dollars right out of our school board budget?
Yeah.
I was at the meeting where she presented, I asked the question of how many students has she seen this happen to? And I was under the impression she said two in the last ten to fifteen years. So I, I am in favor of signing on and supporting this because it is unpredictable. But I'm not so sure that it's, that it's happening every year around lots of students.
Barrett, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and that's the, you know, it was a few students, but I, I think one of the things that we hear in these meetings is the increase in special education coming up. So down the road, maybe not this year or next year, but five years from now, instead of two, there's ten. And, you know, and that's my biggest concern right there, I wasn't just thinking initially, but down the road, that's why.
I'm not sure if you want my opinion.
Go right ahead.
Cause I'm too well versed, but in my opinion, I'm not opposed to signing on to it either. DHHS needs an overhaul, our area agencies need an overhaul. I'm trying real hard, but I can't solve the world. And unless somebody pushes back, there's not going to be an overhaul. It's not going to happen. There isn't support for these families and there should be support from these families and it should start at fourteen, not at eighteen when they lose absolutely everything. Cause they can be integrated into society to have an independent life and until people band together and push back, they're not going to change their ways. And that's starting at age fourteen though, starts at the school district. Be like starting right now with kids like my age to set them up so this doesn't happen and then fall on the school system and then fall on the taxpayers. Like it's bigger than just this. And unless people band together and do something like this, I don't think you're going to see a state, a, a change on the state level or the area agency level, if I'm making any sense.
Do you need a motion then?
Yes.
Spend the money?
And to be named as a friend of court.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion? Not I can write it down.
Can we make it as we make it as two motions?
Sure, well, if you make one, then you can make it however you want.
Make a motion that we support and sign on to the friends of the court. Letter.
Right.
Second up.
All right, any other discussion on that piece? Great, then all in favor of signing on and joining the friends of the court? Do you say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Great. That's done. As for money?
I, I, I'll make a motion to add a thousand dollars, add a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars for a thousand dollars to come from the school board budget to be added to the friend of the court. To the brief, yes.
Hey, is there a second? I'll second. Discussion. Everybody at once?
Yeah. One of the other things maybe I should have talked about at the last motion.
Hello?
Was that if I correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen was suggesting or somebody was suggesting that we add like letters to go to the court to show our do you remember that? Can't, I, I wish Amy were here because she'd probably be better at this than I am, but there was something said about adding information from our particular district. District, yeah, and to make it, that we were vested in this friend of the court brief. And because the justices in the Supreme Court that are hearing this, they don't know, that was the reasoning behind it. So if we can send supporting documentation along with it, then, you know, not only we have our name on it, we've invested ourselves financially in this. And we've provided, you know, evidence from the district. Then I think that would go a long way to hopefully swaying a decision in favor of the districts and getting DHS to get their you know, team together.
Right, so if we've agreed to sign on, is that something that Ms. Gershia can do on our behalf or on behalf of the district?
Would we see that before? It gets attached? But would the board be able to see it? Right.
Stacy, would you, you want to ask that if Karen writes something up, it gets put in our drive and we get an email and then we have like three days to look it over and just then, if somebody sees something egregious and they don't want it sent out for whatever reason, we could just say, stop the presses till we can talk, but if not, we'll, we'll say like three days from the time we get the email and then. Okay, so I think there's still a motion and a second for contribution of a thousand dollars, so is there any other discussion around that? Okay, then all in favor of contributing a thousand dollars from the school board budget to support the friends of the court brief, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstentions? Great. Okay. So we do have, what letter are we in, B and C, that's still, B and C, okay. So do have need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA ninety one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, small letters B and C, small letter B is, man, this God, it just keeps getting smaller. Small letter B is the hiring of any person as a public employee and C is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. In favor of entering non-public at a roll call vote at seven fourteen PM, Jean?
Yes.
Melanie? Stacy?
Yes.
And Amy S?
Motion to accept staff resignations.
I'll second it.
Right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? Fantastic.
Motion to accept. Motion to accept.
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Great.
Sure.
Right, motion to approve or accept?
Motion to approve hires?
I'll second.
Right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, anything else? Okay, our next scheduled meeting is May third, six thirty right here. Um, there's not exec board or May eleventh?
May eleventh.
And area's not coming up, right? Oh, same, okay.
Okay, so
My bad.
Am I on the area? Okay. Cause I can't go. I have to go to the exec, yeah. Oh, oh. Oh, that's
Jean can't make it. Oh, yeah.
Alright, then I'll go then. I'll be there anyway.
Okay, if there's nothing else, all except motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye.